I would like to call this special meeting of the Larkspur City Council to order. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Harrah.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Hillmer.
Here. Would you please, if you're able, rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public in the audience or online that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding items that are not on the agenda this evening?
I think for any raised hands from our audience members on Zoom or in the chambers. There is no public comment.
Very good. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which are presentations and proclamations. I actually have a proclamation that I would like to read into the public record. It's a short. I won't read the entire proclamation. It's a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Larkspur. This is honoring one of our local businesses that took a chance on Larkspur during the pandemic and decided to open during the pandemic. And it's actually an unofficial adjunct city hall for the city manager and myself because we've had many important conversations at this location. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Larkspur proclaiming April 8th, this is the birthday of the owner, April 8th, 2023 El Togaros Day. This is a local restaurant. Whereas the Caranza Flores family opened El Togaros, a wonderful restaurant in the city of Larkspur during the pandemic after businesses started to reopen in April of 2022. The family worked extraordinarily hard to fulfill a dream of Alba Caranza Flores, who's the mother of the family and her partner. Their dream was to have a thriving local business of their own. Luckily, they had ways and means to open a perfect local restaurant serving delicious El Salvadoran food that has become quite popular as a local gathering place for the community. And El Togaros has been favorably reviewed by local newspapers like the Marin Independent Journal. And they're expanding all his business into catering activities. And they make a really great habanero hot sauce, by the way. The El Togaros team has creatively extended their product sales with new menu items. And it's a well-loved and respected business in the community, and we look forward to growing of their customer base. And the city of Larkspur staff and council, the community, and all the customers wish to convey our best wishes and a happy congratulations to El Togaros and the Caranza Flores family for their hard work and generous contributions to our city. They've truly made Larkspur a better place by virtue of their passion, talent, and sacrifice to make this local family institution a great place that serves memorable meals to all age and income groups. Therefore, be it resolved that Saturday, the 8th of April, 8th day of April, 2023, is El Togaros Restaurant Day in the city of Larkspur. We love this restaurant. Give it a try. And we love their owner, Ms. Alba Caranza Flores. Thank you very much.
You're here.
All right, the next item is approval of the consent calendar. We have two items. Are there members of the council that would like to ask questions or remove either of these items for further discussion? Seeing none, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding these two items?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. There's no public comment.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Would I please, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the consent count.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrah.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes, that passes unanimously. The next item is the city manager's oral report. Good evening, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. A few items for you. First, I want to thank our Public Works Maintenance Crew. They've rains kind of slowed them down, but they've done a nice job of getting the downtown. We've got lights up. They put some lights in some of the trees. And all the banners are now our winter collection. So thank you to them for spending some time doing that. Second, on your consent calendar, you passed the latest version of your AB 361 resolution that allows you to have, in our case, hybrid meetings. You may be aware or not that the governor's announced his intent to end the state of emergency in February. That complicates our ability to have hybrid meetings. So we'll be bringing you a full report in January about the options and ramifications of that declaration by the governor. Unfortunately, the legislature didn't pass legislation to make the hybrid environment a permanent one without a lot of restrictions. So we'll be bringing you that in a future meeting. And then wanted to just note a couple of calendar items first. The city will have a winter closure. The city offices will close on the 23rd of December, and then we won't reopen until January 3rd, I think it is. And then the library will offer limited hours on the 23rd and then follow the same closure schedule as the rest of the city. And then lastly, for the meetings in January, the calendar slightly different. So we'll be having a special meeting on January 11. And we'll be having a regular meeting on January 18. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dan. The next item on this evening's agenda are councilmembers' oral reports and comments. Are there any councilmember reports this evening? Seeing none?
Just briefly, I
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to add on that the January 11th meeting will be for for the rent stabilization and rent subsidy. So I know a lot of people have been asking and waiting and, you know, we've been working and knowing that the holidays are coming and we have this transition, other things. We just want you to know that we, you know, even over the holidays, I'll be working on it. And on the 11th, we'll have a more chance to resume everything we discussed in the fall. So thanks for your patience.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearings this evening. I'll move to the business item calendar, which is the first item is to adopt resolution declaring the results of the municipal election held on November the 8th, 2022. May we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, very simply, it's now been certified by the county, the results of the election, and this is your resolution to accept those results and acknowledge them. And I should note that two incumbents, councilmembers Way and Harrah, and councilmember-elect Carols in the audience were all elected and Measure G passed. Those were the items of local interest.
And we certainly thank the community for the passage of Measure G. I thank you for the staff report. Are there questions from the councilmembers regarding this item? Are there members of the public that have questions or comments regarding this item?
If hands from our audience members in Zoom or in person. There is no public comment.
All right, well, it's a business item. We'll bring it back to the council. I would consider a motion for adoption of the resolution. Ninety-nine slash twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrah.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is the swearing in of newly elected councilmembers to a four-year term. May we have a staff report, please?
I think the title kind of is the staff report, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give you a chance.
All right, I think this is, we have the city clerk will administer an oath to the newly elected councilmembers. Kevin Carroll, Kevin Harrah, and Catherine Wood.
I will. I was wondering if first Vice Mayor Paulson would like to make any presentations for the mayor as he'd be stepping down from the dais at this point?
Oh, of course I would. So.
Well, while you're doing that, I will, I will just say, I want to thank the community for supporting our city, especially our city staff, everybody that does all the work. We have, we've hired great managers here in Larkspur who hire the best staff. And our boards and commission members, thank you for your volunteer work, past and present. It's, it's your work, supporting the staff that makes all of this happen and makes Larkspur such a special place to live. And my colleagues, past and present, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. So thank you very much. It's a great Larkspur. I love Larkspur. It's a wonderful city.
And Mayor Hillmer, we wanted to acknowledge, we had a party last Wednesday and many were there, but we're gonna miss you. We know you're not far away, and you've always given credit to everybody else. This is you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Pair of shoes.
Close.
Wow.
Yeah. For handiwork.
That, that is something. Thor would be. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Try not to break it.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a matter of call? Can we reserve till later in the proceedings our respective comments about this transition?
Sure.
All right.
Well. Somebody's gonna have to take this seat.
Right, I'll sit here for now. So I guess we will do the swearing in of councilmember Carol.
Thank you. Yes, I'd ask for all councilmember Way, Councilmember Harrah, and Councilmember White, Kevin Carroll to come join me up here. We'll sort of stand in a bit of a row. Maybe we can look on the monitor and make sure that you're in camera frame. There we go. All right, I would ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. So I will continue the meeting as vice mayor and again, congratulations to councilmember Way, councilmember Harrah, and welcome and congratulations to you, councilmember Carol. The next item is eight point three, which is election of mayor and vice mayor. So I think first we would entertain a nomination for vice mayor if anyone wants to make a nomination.
I would like very much to make a nomination for vice mayor.
Okay. And who would that be?
That would be Mr. Candell.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion, nomination, and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrah.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Congratulations, Scott. Thank you. And then I wanted to take nomination for mayor. Anyone want to move that?
It would be my privilege to nominate Gabe Paulson for the mayor of the term 2023 for the city of Larkspur.
I'd be happy to second that.
Oh, thank you. All right, well, can we have a roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to invite the representatives of the Volunteer Firefighters Foundation to to come speak to you and potentially make a presentation to you now. Gentlemen.
Thank you. This is wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Paulson and councilmembers. I am Dennis Chilardi, and I am the chairman of the Board of the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation. And with me is Mike McDermott. And we are here this evening for the annual gavel presentation. And to start things off, Mike, would you here to hold these envelopes and not open yet? Please. Just hold it.
Okay. Once goes to Scott. Oh, I'm sorry.
The Larkspur Volunteer Fire Department is now known as the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation. And this gavel presentation, as far as we can tell, dates back over 50 years. We haven't been able to get into our archives to really look at this. But I'd like to give you a brief history of the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Department, which was formally incorporated on December 3rd in 1913. And we started our history of serving this community in the early 1900s. And it was established by our local businesspeople and citizens, including my grandfather Andrew, who came here to Larkspur in 1921. And as they established the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Fighters, was originally known as Larkspur Volunteer Firemen. They noted, they felt that there had to be fundraising in order to assist in their efforts in providing services to our community. And the first of those efforts centered around entertainment and dancing. The first dance that is recorded that we know of was at the precursor to the Larkspur Rose Bowl, was on a wooden platform across the street from the Blue Rock Hotel in 1908. By 1913, the Rose Bowl Dance Pavilion had been established. It was on Kane Street, and as you walk around Larkspur, it's now the Rose Bowl Apartments. That outdoor dancing pavilion had big bands, huge dance floor. And as we progressed in the dances, or as my predecessors did, thousands and thousands of people would come to Larkspur on Saturday nights. And they got here pre-Goldengate Bridge by ferry and train. The dance pavilion was staffed by the Larkspur Volunteer Fire and the Cordera Fire. So there was a sharing between our cities way back in the beginning. Now, in your packet, you may look now, is a little medallion, which represents the original coat check that was used in the formal days. And this medallion was replicated for our Centennial Rose Bowl Dance in 2012. Don't look at the rest of it yet. The dances were of financial success. And that allowed the Volunteer Fire Department to purchase the first fire truck in Marin County. The 1916 Model T fire truck that we still have today. And you've seen in past parades. The volunteers purchased funded the first fire hydrant system in Larkspur. They funded the alarm pull boxes. Look at the card. And you can see on there numbers and locations. And that corresponded to the horn that still sits on top of Station 15 today. And when that went off, you would know the location of the fire, which was really important to everybody. The volunteers paid for Station 15. In 1938, we moved the volunteers' equipment from this building downstairs where the library is next door. And that allowed for the expansion of the library lo those many years ago. Also in Station 15 are two jail cells that were used for people that imbed too much during the Rose Bowl dances. And as the volunteers progressed through our system, many of them went on to be full-time firefighters. We have a steep history of individuals from our community who have gone on to other positions. Locally in Gabe's neighborhood, Newberry Brothers spent their career in Larkspur. One being a captain when he retired. Bob Senate, who is now deputy fire chief in San Rafael. Tom Forster of Cordera is no longer with us. Scott Shirts, whose father was a fire chief. Scott was a fire chief. And Scott retired from the Central Marin Fire. What happened to the volunteers? Well, as we progressed in the growth of our community, it was recognized that we needed full-time professional firefighters to respond to the emergency medical needs and other issues within our community. Disaster awareness became important. Funding and cost of running fire departments. So all of that has given rise to changes. Less than 10 years ago, we had seven fire jurisdictions in the Ross Valley. We had seven fire chiefs. Today, we have three. One sitting right behind me. And we have three fire departments. That's the wave of the future. We recognize that in with the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Department. Today is, we only have left in Marin County Volunteer Fire Service in West Marin. Us volunteers are a thing of the past. And because of the changes that were happening in our community and society, we moved the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Department to the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation in order to protect its memorabilia, its history, and its assets. We have the 1916 Model T fire truck. We have horse-drawn hand pumper. We have hose cart. We have a history room next door in Station 15 that I would like to invite councilmembers to have a tour of. And we'll get Doug Archer, another local guy who retired as a deputy fire chief, to give you the history tour. We've got over 100 years of artifacts in that room. And Larkspur is not any different than most of the other communities in Marin County. Everyone was served by volunteer fire departments. And I recently came across in our Larkspur Here and Now History Book, page 174, if you want to look. There's a photo from 1911 of a little seven-year-old girl sitting on a hand-drawn cart. It was a chemical cart. It had two chemical tanks on it. As far as we can tell, that was probably stored up in Madrone Canyon, which had its own little firehouse up there. And also, I'd like the council to recognize the They publish a video series that is called Code Three. And that's done by Chief Leless, who's retired Larkspur fire chief, and Chief Paul Smith from Kentfield. So what's going to happen next with us? The next is you will be looking at a facilities report dealing with the fire stations in Marin County. And the part that got my attention, Station 15 is called out as being old, past its useful life. It's hard to fit modern fire trucks in. And the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation would like to work with the council in order to preserve that facility and to use part of it as a living history of the fire service, not only in Larkspur, but in Marin County. So with that, Mike, where are you?
You counsel, appreciate you having us. It's an honor to be here. So these are not our pajamas. Okay, just to be clear, these are actually the historical outfits that were worn by the volunteers back in history. And we brought these out for the annual Fourth of July parade. If any of you have ever seen that Model T go down the street, we will dress in these. And we felt it was appropriate to be able to come and share that with you. So I just wanted to talk a little about, I moved to Larkspur in 2004. And I was fortunate enough to be invited to join the Larkspur Volunteer Fire, the Larkspur Volunteer Firefighters Association at the time. And I would embrace those monthly meetings. I knew I grew up on the East Coast. I didn't know the history of Larkspur. And every month, we would have a meeting, and it would be this group of people, citizens that grew up in Larkspur and were the folks that basically owned businesses and gave their time to help support and grow Larkspur to who it is today. And I loved every one of those. We would have a dinner. The paid staff would be there with us. And we would share. We would have roll call. And at that time, we would support the paid staff in different functions of different kinds. But that, to me, really was the history of Larkspur, and it grasped me as something we don't ever want to give up. And we want to keep that and maintain that. So today, I wanted to share with you that we actually have our oldest member, Oakley Dexter, still alive at the age of 100, used to run the TV repair shop down right over here. It's now Farmhouse. It was a TV, local TV repair and radio repair shop. And Oakley's still alive today, and he joined the volunteers in the 40s. And he loved telling stories, and God love Oakley. I'd like to also take this moment. We've lost two members that I think are really special people that gave a lot back to the community. Like others have done. And one of those is Dale Eubanks. Dale passed away in 1986, having lived and worked in Larkspur since 1934. And you may, I don't know how many of you have been around, but before Pico's, it used to be known as Catherine Eubanks Florist. And that was Dale's mother. And Dale and his wife Lynn took it over, and they ran that until the 2000s when it closed. And he raised Lynn and his two children, Katie and Kristen here. Dale was a member of the Volunteer Firemen after being graduate of the first class of Drake High School in 1954. He was a proud member of the Lions Club and was a strong supporter of our Twin Cities Little League. So we miss him. More recently, some of you may know Dan White. Dan White was a very special and caring person. Dan was raised in Larkspur. And he came from a family that was committed to community service. His father was, I believe, a fire chief. He was on the fire department, volunteer fire, and in the public works. And Dan was raised in Larkspur, graduated from Redwood High School, raised his wife Becky and his daughters Erin and son Dan Jr. He spent over 30 years as a pastor in the community. He spent over thirty years as a pastor in the community and was always giving back. He was a volunteer firefighter at the age of sixteen. And became the chaplain of the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Department, of the Larkspur Fire Department. He was a law enforcement chaplain for San Francisco Sheriff Department and the Marin County Sheriff Office. He coached baseball, softball. He coached for the Twin Cities Little League, Redwood's girls softball team, and the San Quentin inmate team. He will be missed. He did ask that we share this upon his death. I would like to acknowledge how much my extracurricular activities and community service meant to me. And all the incredible people I met along the way who blessed my life. In all of the church and community committees and task forces I was a part of during my life. I'm deeply, deeply grateful for all the wonderful people, coaches and players who graced my life immediately. So thank you to Dale, Dan, for their service and just giving everybody a piece of. What the volunteers meant to where Larkspur is today. So thank you. Now we need to move on to the gavel ceremony, something that must continue. So Mayor Paulson. As we share, this is a saying that we've been using for a while that comes from famous Uncle Skinny. Stand up to be seen. Speak up to be heard and sit down to be popular.
Wow, well, thank you.
Wait, one last comment. Dan, we're going to miss you a lot. Yeah, it's been, it's been a joy to work with you and all the other council members and all this time. So thank you, and you will be missed. I know that. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and I guess this is the part where um. I'll say a few words, and I think uh, Councilmember Harrow wanted to say a few words, and maybe some of you others saw. I'll be very brief, as you advised, I'll sit down to be popular. But I, I did, I did just want to start off with a few thank yous. I mean, I have to say that's my overwhelming feeling, you know. Being here for the three years that I've been here already. And you know, the presentation, you know, Dennis, and that you, that you both just gave. I think it really just shows that you remember people who care and you. Commemorate and you honor and you try to push it to the future. And to me, that's one of the most important things about any of us sitting up here. And as I look out, you know, I'm looking at, you know, former mayor Chu, and I, I think this is one of the people who. Got me involved and, and you know, inspired me and, and uh, former mayor Hilmer. Uh, you know, how many times we walked and even before I got on the council. And you know, the list, the list is, is pretty endless, and I. I'm, I'm just grateful for the fact that there's such a volunteer spirit. And then on the staff, I really have to acknowledge, I'll start with our city manager. So I've been doing this for three years, and every Tuesday at twelve-thirty, Dan, Dan Schwartz and I talk. And you know, so we've talked a hundred fifty times, and if you were my therapist, that would be a lot of money. It sort of is, so I owe him big time, but I, I. I know Dan is, is a paid professional, but I also feel in every conversation, there's the same spirit we're talking about here, one of. Uh, really the highest standard for the community and, and a great benefit for those of us who are trying to serve as well. So. For your service, you know, I really want to thank you and hope we can keep that going. I'll, I'll keep that twelve-thirty spot open. And then, you know, uh, Chief Ruben, I, I, Chief Martin, I'm Ruben Martin, I. Feel like we have these volunteer meetings and you're always on call, and there's fifteen, twenty members of the community. And they eat up everything you say. I mean, it's, it's great that you take time. You've been there, and I think that both of you and uh, you know. Um, the Housing Director, Simone, and I mean, I've seen you in the park and saying, what can I do on a Saturday night where I'm like, maybe, you know, do something you want to do? So, so much effort. And anyway, long story short, I think we have great people, a great community, a great staff. And lastly, you know, we know that we're walking into twenty twenty-three with the housing issue sort of as an unresolved chapter, and we'll pick that up in January. And we also know that the financial situation moving into twenty twenty-three is a little uncertain with the economy and what happens next. And there's still disaster preparedness and a lot of infrastructure, the fate of this building, what happens with the library. So all I can say is I'm most grateful to have these other four members here with me, and. I've worked with each one of you, including Mister Carol. It was my first assignment was to go to Marin Park, and I've. Always appreciated his intelligence and his thoughtfulness, and I think he'll be a great contribution. So. I want to thank all four of you, and I look forward to the year ahead. So thank you. So if anybody else wants to speak, otherwise we're going to move to an adjournment.
Oh. You can go first, go ahead.
Uh, so I, I just, again, trying to be as quick as I can, but uh, I. Have to say something to, to Dan. Um. You know, I, I've been on the council for three years. Uh, I had no idea what I was doing. You know, you get in here, there's not a training class on how to be a councilman or anything like that, and. You really were inspirational, and I just want to thank you. Um. There were plenty of times when we disagreed. Um, but that's what this is about, you know? We disagreed respectfully, and I always respected your opinion. You always explained it. You always. Took the time, you know, to. You know, just uh, help me understand where you were coming from. And you were a great role model of how to be a council member, and I, I just wanted to thank you. That's, so thank you.
I also wanted to make a comment to Dan Hilmer. Um. We have this interesting legacy in Larkspur that our ex-council members don't go far. They tend to um. To continue to be active, not maybe in an elected role, but I mean, we've pulled Larry Chu in several times. Ann Morrison is back. Ron Arliss shows up. Joan Lubomirsky and Joan Lundstrom frequently offer their opinions. So it's a very important, um, I think, as an emeritus. That you um, will continue to stay with you in our sphere because you provide a long history of. Much of the backstory to many of the existing issues that we have to go forward. So. We won't let you go far. We'll drag Larry in often for different things, and it's always a wealth of information. So. Thank you for that.
But not as many times.
I want to thank Dan also. Uh, he's been very encouraging. Uh, to me and his counsel and advice. I'm sure I will be approaching you in the future. During the campaign, there were a couple of times at events and then privately. With reporters where they were kind of looking for a story. And hoping for something juicy, and I said, you picked the wrong town. Quite frankly, yeah, we have some major issues facing us. We have faced them in the past. But having observed this council for three years, I've been fascinated by the collegiality of it. Uh, and the respect that it shows both to each other and to the members of the community. And with that, I'll try to be more popular. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We have, now we have two Kevins up here, and it's going to be hard to tell us apart. Um, I just want to say a couple of things. First, I want to thank the Volunteer Firefighters. Uh, for their presentation. Uh, every time we have one of these ceremonies, you guys show up. Um, dressed in your pajamas. And you do a wonderful job of connecting Larkspur's presence with its past. Um, and that's a very important thing in this community because we celebrate both. Uh, I want to congratulate Kevin Carroll. On your success in your election, um, and welcome you very much to this dais. Um, you and I've gotten to know each other a little bit better over the last month or so. And I am very confident that you're going to make a wonderful contribution to the success of this council and the city. Uh, I also want to congratulate my colleague Catherine Way. Uh, who I have sat here with for nine years now. Um, which is almost as long as Dan Hilmer, but not, not quite. But we have sat up here together with, with Mister Hilmer, and that has been um, rewarding. Um, and I want to congratulate our new mayor. Uh, with whom I've also had an opportunity uh, during the time that he's been on this dais. To work with personally on any number of ad hoc committees and other capacities. Uh, and always have appreciated his candor, his preparation. Um, and his consideration for the people on whose behalf he is working. So thank you and congratulations again. And then finally, there's Mister Hilmer. Choke up a little bit. Uh, like I said, um, Dan has served up here with us for nine years. While I've been on, you've served longer, but I haven't been there the whole time. We had a celebration uh, here locally a week or two ago. Um, down at the American Legion Hall, which was a wonderful event. For those of you who were able to attend, you can, you can attest to that. Um, and the, the outpouring of support that I saw both spoken publicly and in private. For Dan Hilmer. As a council member and as a mayor, and actually as a former planning commissioner, which I have to throw in. Uh, was just wonderful to hear. I think I mentioned during that ceremony that um. I grew to. View Dan in two ways. Over time, but pretty quickly. One uh, was really as a, as a role model and as a mentor. Uh, for providing an example. Of someone who, for a long period of time, has demonstrated his commitment to public service without waiver. Uh, or any caution about how he might be perceived by the public for things that he might do or say. Uh, and I've taken that to heart. Uh, and I hope that um, I can at least a little bit carry on the um, the tradition of a civil service. For which you have provided a wonderful example. Uh, the second thing is, I, this is why I'm choking up. Uh, I've come to view you as a friend. A personal friend. And that friendship is going to last well beyond tonight. Uh, and I'm looking forward to it. As Catherine said, you know, you guys don't go far away, and I'm seeing two of you right sitting right in front of each other and behind. And that's a wonderful thing. Um, but it's wonderful, not only because of the opportunity that we have to take advantage of you. After your formal service. Uh, as a more of a catch-all servant in a no-formal way. Um, but also in both of your cases, the experience that I've had up here with you. Has created what I think is going to be a lifelong friendship. And I will value that forever.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Thank you for that, uh, Kevin, and. I think we're ready to adjourn, so uh, it's a wonderful holiday season coming up. It's going to be a big year ahead. I'm really happy to be here and see everybody who's here, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think I have two of these. Good night, everybody.